...in the Metropolitan Council which includes St. Paul, the section of our city that's west of 35E, so quite a bit of the Central Corridor or Green Line alignment and its adjacent neighborhoods. So, thanks again for coming and making time this morning to share your thoughts about the supplemental environmental impact statement on the project. I'd like to just note that this is the first of two hearings to be held today. The second is at 6 o'clock this evening, and that will be held at which location?
Goodwill Easter Seals.
At Goodwill Easter Seals at 6 o'clock. So, if you see friends and colleagues and family members who may be interested in participating in this process but weren't able to make it this morning, please invite and encourage them to attend this evening. We've got a number of folks that I'd like to acknowledge. Our Chair Susan Haag is intending to attend this morning, and she'll be here shortly, I believe. Sandy Rumel, a fellow council member, is also with us this morning. And then we have some senior staff, Mark Furman and Catherine O'Brien, also from our team, who will be presenting on the supplemental work this morning and then introducing the basis for this morning's hearing. So, again, thank you very much for being here. Mark?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Combers. Again, I'm Mark Furman, and I'm the Program Director for New Starts Rail Projects here in the Twin Cities. And I'm going to make a couple more introductions here before we get into the formal public hearing. Just arriving and hanging his coat, Councilmember Adam Denick, welcome, Councilmember. And also, St. Paul, Councilmember Russ Stark has joined us, so thank you very much for stopping in this morning, Russ. This morning, I will take a couple minutes just to walk us through really the ground rules of today's public hearing. You all have seen the document online and taken a look at it, so we look forward to hearing your comments. So, the purpose for today's hearing is really to listen, to listen to your comments based on the supplemental document that we published back at the end of December, and really speak specifically... Good morning, Chair Haag.
Hi.
We'd like to get settled, if that's okay. I'll just walk through the ground rules. Okay? And the focus of the hearing is really quite narrow, and that is related to the construction-related potential impacts on your business revenues as you operate your businesses here along the Central Corridor. The document was published in December, December 14th, for a period of 45 days. So, we're in the midst of that comment period now, and that'll continue till the end of January?
January 30th.
January 30th will be the concluding day for receipt of public comment. These comments will be incorporated into the overall environmental documentation for the project, and the responses, your comments and the responses to those, will ultimately appear in the final environmental impact statement. That'll come later this spring. No news here, a familiar map of the alignment and the stations that we are speaking to here today. We are not here today to talk about southwest LRT or any other LRT. Our focus is on the Central Corridor Green Line. Where we're at on the project, as you all live in the corridor and have experienced the construction the last two years, we're pleased to say that the overall project now is 87% complete. The civil works for this end of the project here, what we call the Civil East, St. Paul side of the civil construction, is 99% complete. So, all the roadways, the new sidewalks, and the 14 stations on the St. Paul end of the project are complete. Now, that's not the end of construction. You can see on the chart here that systems construction has begun, but that would be the focus of construction in 2013. That means there will be crews still, construction crews still working, but they'll be primarily out along the railroad tracks, along the guideway, as we say, and they'll be erecting poles and all the electrical wiring to provide the power to the trains once they start operating. Towards the end of 2013, you'll begin to see more regularly some of our new light rail vehicles that have begun to arrive and be delivered to Minneapolis, and they will begin doing some testing along the alignment to check on the power and the train signals and traffic signals and communication links back to the rail control center. So, you'll continue to see a fair amount of activity in 2013, and that will include light rail vehicles here as we move into the fall of this year. And then we're still on schedule to open up sometime in the middle of next year. We could say now, "next year," Councilmembers, which is nice to say now, this week. So, for the ground rules today, we would certainly invite you and encourage you to sign at the table there. Shoe and N'Kongo are accepting any folks who want to sign up and testify, get in the queue. At the end, after we exhaust that signup list, we will certainly still welcome folks to ask to speak from the floor, but you will be after all those who have signed up in advance. So, we'll call your name, and once you come to the microphone, we'll ask you to state your name and address. If you represent an agency or organization, we would want to know that as well. If you're speaking as an individual or individual business, we'd ask that your comments be about three minutes in length. If you're representing a more community-based organization, we would ask for up to five minutes' worth of comments. And again, just emphasize that this is a public hearing to talk about the Central Corridor Green Line and to talk about those business impacts caused by construction. In addition to your verbal comments, we'd love to hear those today, but if you have other comments, or if you'd like to submit your oral testimony in formal writing, you can do so, and those will be submitted either via email to the email address you see here or to Catherine O'Brien, our lead environmental expert on the project, and that's for, if you want to send it via USPS. Comments are open until January 30th. So, with that, Madam Chair and Councilmembers, I'll pass it back to you, and perhaps we can get started.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for providing that interview. I want to introduce John Combers, who is our Councilmember who represents this part of the Central Corridor, and Councilmember Rumel, who is district president of the North, and as a panel advocate, Councilmember Adam Denick in the back, who is representing the Minneapolis portion of the Central Corridor. I'm Sue Haag, I'm the Chair of the Met Council, and I appreciate all of you coming out this morning. We also have another public hearing scheduled this evening at 6:00 PM. Is that correct, Mark? And that is at...
Goodwill.
No, Goodwill. So, if you have colleagues or businesses or neighbors that would like to speak and get the chance to get through this morning, they can come this evening as well. And with that, I appreciate all of you coming, and I look forward to hearing the testimony.
There's the list, Madam Chair. Just want to be getting following up, folks, from the list.
First is Lon Larry.
Morning, everybody. Welcome to Ward 1, to my neighborhood. We've been involved, I'm from Aurora St. Anthony Neighborhood Development Corporation, and I represent the folks back here in Aurora St. Anthony Neighborhood.
I can't hear.
Sorry about that. I represent, I'm from Aurora St. Anthony Neighborhood Development Corporation, which is at 774 University Avenue. We've watched this project with anticipation, myself. I've been working on this since 2005. So, that being said, we've seen a lot of stuff happening down in this area, and we saw a lot of businesses that really were trying to hang on at the time they couldn't. We have fought for this thing, and there are some reports that weren't done right. We're still here, but we'd like to get equity for our people down in this area. That report that had to be redone shouldn't have had to be redone. So, that being said, welcome. Please listen to what we have to say down here. The businesses down here are really struggling. There was a combination, I guess it would be your perfect storm, a long construction period, plus a media that didn't understand that we did need people to come down here and visit our businesses. So, bringing those people back to this area is going to be a hard thing to do. So, that's what we want, is we want people to come back and visit our area, spend their dollars here, and make sure that we survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, thank you. Next up is Mike Zipko.
Good morning. My name is Mike Zipko, and I am the Board Chair of the Midway Chamber of Commerce, and thank you for the opportunity to allow us to come here and share some of our thoughts. The Midway Chamber has been strongly involved in advocating and trying to support the business interests along the Central Corridor, and we will continue to do so. We urge you to continue the work to better understand and fully understand the impact this project has had on businesses, to try and find more objective ways to measure the impact, so it helps people understand both what happened and a little bit more about why, and maybe to be able to predict this in the future. We think it's important to do, as you move forward, take practical steps as you're looking at ways to support businesses that have meaningful impacts, but understand that you don't have enough resources to solve every problem, make the most significant, most practical investments. We think the focus needs to be, to continue to be on business mitigation and business support long after the train is running in 2014. One of the things we've found is that even after construction had been finished on the western part of University Avenue, traffic had not come back. People had perceived that the entire avenue and the entire area was not an accessible place, and I think the message needs, the focus needs to continue until the trains are running and even long after that. We also hope that the lessons that have been learned from the business impacts and some of the successful and less than successful mitigation efforts can be documented, shared, and be used to shape future projects to make what happens in this metro area better going forward. The business community understands transit investments need to continue in this marketplace. We're hoping that the painful lessons that have been learned here can help inform other projects and make us a smarter region as we do move forward. The Midway Chamber wants to continue to be a resource and an advocate for the business community and willing to engage with the Met Council and other advocates here, continuing to go forward. It's been our history, it's our legacy, and we're going to continue to do this long after the train is running, and want to continue to be an advocate for both the businesses and the impact that transit has had. We also like to applaud and congratulate the effort that the Met Council has undertaken with Maude and Company for the recent marketing materials, the book, and some of the other ways to help brand and help people identify different parts of the avenue. We think are great. We think they are easy for people outside the area to understand, and we think it's very, probably one of the most dramatic marketing efforts we've seen in a long time. We're doing what we can to share it, and we encourage you to continue activities like that. And we just hope that this process, as painful as it's been, like you said, creates lessons and good steps to be taking going forward, because we strongly support the Central Corridor, but also are very concerned about the impact it's had on our members and everything from what we try to do with Lunch on the Avenue to other things that we're trying to do. Our efforts aren't going to continue, and we just want to continue to advocate on behalf of the businesses along the corridor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Jack McCann.
Good morning. My name is Jack McCann. I am the President of the University Avenue Business Association, representing approximately 240 members up and down the University Avenue Corridor. The comments I'm going to make are based on the report itself, starting with, in the report, I'm disagreeing with the portion on the alternatives covered more than once, stating the different alternatives that were looked at, and deciding finally on one called the preferred method. It refers to 2009 Record of Decision, and 2010, and then 2011 Finding of No Significant Impact Study. Those reports, I believe, came after the preferred method was already chosen, so the latter two have already been determined as bogus reports. They really didn't address things in a manner, and that is probably why we are back here again today. The real experts on the avenue, the business owners, made it clear time and time again there would be a lot of damage. It started in '06. I've been the President since 2009. I've heard at least 1,000 stories on this. Had a proper evaluation been done, the preferred method would not probably have been approved by the FTA for the matching funds of $450 million due to failing the Cost-Effective Index. It even did not include three extra stations which were added later. There's a huge amount of funding that was left out of the funding request by not admitting the damage was significant. The preferred method is believed to be simply what the Met Council desired and wanted to fit the scheme of the transit in the area, and it appears that the studies were massaged to support that. Next, the study does not go on to state any real amount of damage in dollars. Real dollar amounts would have been, had to been included in the request for funding in the form of mediation or mitigation. Left out of the picture is the damage to the residents and the home values. There is a direct relationship between small business and the nearby residents. Left out is the economic downturn from the planning stage prior to construction. Businesses were leaving, and there wasn't a proper study leading up to the construction. Businesses got out of the way of the train. It had an effect on the vacancy that we are currently reporting is 25% or thereabouts. It also has a very big direct impact on the comment in the report saying that a net loss of three businesses over the course of construction. It's kind of a joke, you don't equip 25% vacancy by losing three businesses. The typical corridor similar to this all throughout the country rates about 9% vacancy. So, it was not properly examined. Left out of the report is also rental property. It happens to be my business. My business is rental offices and warehouses. There was, we saw an enormous downturn. Some of it, I will admit, was due to the general economic situation in the city, but personally, during the two years of construction and leading up to it, I was told numerous times by realtors and possible tenants that they just simply don't want to be down here during deconstruction phases or until things are up and running, which is still 2014, so another year-plus away. Based on that, the dollar amounts I've seen in my business, $2 to $3 per foot rent. I've got about 200,000 square feet in the area down there. The simple math is $400,000 to $600,000 annually. That is a very slow recovery when you have a 25% vacancy rate. The economics of it is people can rent cheaper elsewhere when there's vacant properties, so the recovery of the per-square foot is very slow to come around. And third, in the future business section in the report, it's kind of funny, the project did not listen to the so-called experts, the businesses up and down the avenue for years leading up to the project, but now the businesses say they expect an increase and to see an uptick, and it's reported happily. This avenue is worse financially. Where else are we supposed to go but up? It's kind of obvious. This project, from planning to design to funding to construction, can be summed up as dishonest and pathetic. We shouldn't have been here in the first place if an honest organization, which is not the Met Council, would have openly evaluated the real effects of shoehorning a project this size onto this avenue. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Brenda, is it Ty?
Thank you. United Medical is at University and Western. We are an MRI center, which the report reflects that medical companies did not lose any income. We lost over 30% of our income during the construction. We had to accommodate with long hours, overtime, doing some of the things that were happening with the equipment out on the streets, including early morning, late nights, and Saturdays and Sundays to accommodate some of the stuff when we didn't know about when it was happening. We additionally had to do extra repairs on our equipment, which was, the total of that was roughly $20,000 to $30,000. Our patients had a hard time getting around to finding locations because the streets were closing, but that was with everybody's case, so that wasn't strictly to us. And then some of the patients are still continuing to complain about parking. I mean, I know there's some on the university, but it's still limited. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is from My Spine Center, and it's Dot Davis.
Hello, good morning. My name is Davis. I represent My Spine Center, and I just have a few thoughts here. Over our revenue, we lost about 30%, about 30,000 to 60,000. And we have lots of trouble of our patient finding parking space during the constructions. During the constructions, patients don't want to come to treatment for our chiropractic clinic because it's a big hassle, and I just want to shed this with you.
Thank you. Next up is, it looks like Troy Decourcy.
Morning. My name is Troy Decourcy, I own The Love Doctor in St. Paul, Minnesota, here on University and Smiling. Regarding the loss of business, we definitely have felt it by about 40% per month, just in lost revenue. The thing I do not see in this, and this is one of my biggest things, is that we do not see the Midway Coalition helping any of the small businesses here, especially with what I'm going through right now with signage. We wanted to have a new sign put up so that traffic could see us coming back and forth and see our name. We were actually going with a smaller sign than what we had. We were approved by the zoning department, had to wait the 10 days for appeal, and of course, the 10 days were up, and someone appealed it, which was the Midway Coalition and Russ Stark. These are two people that, you know, well, the group and then Russ Stark, these are people that we count on, you know, to help us out during this process, to get our business to survive during this construction. And they're arguing the fact that I'm asking for a smaller sign and more visibility, and I think it's wrong, but we have lost a lot of money due to no parking. We do have a lot that's in the back of our building that the city is trying to work on, but has, you know, this was supposed to be done a long time ago. I guess the facts are is that we don't, as business owners, are not getting the help that we deserve. Regardless whether you like us or not, whether, what it is, it's, everybody is feeling this, and we're, you know, we need help. And there's money left over for this parking deal, but there's a lot of money left over that's not being used for the parking for our businesses. That seems to be going away, but according to our contracts that we have with you guys, the $20,000 that we got, in that, it shows an amount for parking. If you're not going to use that, then give it to the businesses that could use this money to stay alive. And that's all I have to say.
Next up is Clay Lambert.
Madam Chair, Councilmembers, Directors. I own Metro Petro. It's on 2700 University Avenue Southeast, over in Prospect Park. I own a gas station. It seems to be in conflict with the light rail, but I actually testified a few years ago that I would like it, because I, there's just no way I'm ever going to be able to pay an affordable living wage as for a cashier or a college kid. That's not my job. We give them a job, we teach them how to work, how to show up to work every day, but they're still broke, and they still need a ride to work, and that's what the light rail will do for me, is bring employees, bring customers and all that stuff. So, it still works for me. I have, I named a portion of the light rail system. It's called, I call it the patch. It's between Prospect Park and the stadium. It's, we're in the patch. And what happened was, the first year, no impact. I was really surprised. We had a great year, so banks said, "Fine, great, no problem." The second year, it was, it was bad. We went right out the cliff, went straight down. That was University, and then I think around July hereon, and University in Washington just looked like a bomb went off, and it went even deeper. I applied for the loan and was denied. Everything was given, or I achieved all my eligibility requirements except for the $2 million gross sales limit, because I sell gas. Girl, or cost of goods on gas is super high, and so it's, of course, I'm going to go way over on that. What I'd like to do, and what I've kind of found out, there's really no formal appeal process other than just coming here or writing a letter back to the, I think it's St. Paul Housing Authority. That's where we're at right now. But one thing I would like you to consider is, if you stretch all those businesses out, which you guys are very familiar with, who's who now, by now, we believe that of the folks that are above the $2 million range along the whole section, I'm pretty sure I'm in the 10% or maybe even 5% of that range. Then of those, more people fall out of their, like, holiday gas station target, da-da-da, because they own multiple locations. So, when you really feather it back down, I'd say I'm in the 1% or less than 1%. And then from there, I'd just like a hearing or an opportunity to appeal it, because Prospect Park is really, has a large portion of the funding left, and the $20,000 I'll let win, it's a nice, I would accept it gladly. So, something to consider in this piece of hearing here for people. Sorry, a little self-serving, but maybe there's someone else out there at my turnip. Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. There's no one else on my list, but perhaps some of us signed up. Thank you. Next is Mike Latif, and then Pete Latif.
I'm Mike Latif. I own Latif Brothers.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Oh, sorry. Mike Latif from Latif Brothers.
From what?
Latif Brothers.
I was thinking in the microphone.
And I'm actually going to speak on, my business partners are going to speak on our business, but I'm going to speak on a loss of a tenant that we have. We used to have Enterprise Rent-A-Car with us for about 18 years, and they were really good tenants of ours, they were a complement to our business. They wanted to stay, and they offered us a 15-year extension lease, had about $5,000 a month, and we had to turn them down because we didn't have the parking for them because we lost all our street parking. And we even tried to buy some lots, and the lots were so expensive to buy and develop that it wasn't feasible. But anyway, it was a huge loss to us for our business and also for having a tenant with income. Now we have nothing to build, and this is all because of a parking loss. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Pete Latif, President of Latif Brothers, I'll abide. I just want to talk specifically about the effects that light rail constructions had on our business. Our customer count in 2011, for estimates, was 2,679 people showed up at our door for estimates. And this is, these numbers are from March until November in most circumstances, 2011, 2012. In 2012, we had 2,200 people show up. That's a 17.6% drop in traffic to our door. If you look at it from a job count standpoint, how many people came to our door that we wrote estimates for but weren't willing to come back to have the work done because of the problems with the traffic and everything else. We had, job count-wise, it was 2,272, down to 1748. That's a 23.6% drop. 524 customers that we lost, probably not somewhere else had their cars fixed. We may never ever get them back. Without getting into, you know, numbers and everything, sales were down 18... Without getting into, you know, numbers and everything, sales were down 18.3%, profit was down 52%. It's a huge drop, not only for the business, but for our employees, they lost hours, they lost income, you know, it's not just a business thing, it's the employee thing too. So, you know, that's just what I want to make everybody aware of, and there should have been some kind of mitigation coming back, you know, to help the businesses and help the employees. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up on my list, if there is anyone else who would like to speak, just please come forward and give your name.
My name is Winston Nguyen, I'm the owner of A54 and A50 University Avenues in St. Paul, and I've been doing No Republic for 22 years. And I run the restaurant across the street from here. But since the light rail construction, my business weighed down maybe 60%. I'm not, again, for light rail, but I give a lot of suggestion about how light rail construction and how they run, and the business on University Avenue still live, alive. And we are very struggle with no parking. We used to have a whole front parking, but now we have none. And the next door of our hall was for sale, and I tried to pay it, to buy it, and I pay application fee and everything, and I've been taking care of that property, have been abandoned, vacationed for at least six, seven years. But the city of St. Paul, I heard that city of St. Paul bought it, and I'm really very upset about why I'm the one, the first, have priority to buy that property, but why St. Paul buy the little spot next to my door? And I talked to the city of St. Paul many times, I talked to development and city and city attorney, and my lawyer at the city of St. Paul too, but nothing worked. And I don't want my business die, I want to keep it, so I, I give idea that many streets and city, they're two land like we have here, A2 and West 2, so we can give business parking for, at least maybe from nine to five, they can park, and one land is traffic moving, and the land of fast on the right will let business parking, or, you know, that will help a lot of the business. And I don't know who have auto right for the private A46 and A48 that I have been, make purchase agreement with Realtor for many years, and I did several times, but they told me that city want that property. I want you have authority to intervene with the city, so I can buy that property, I can build it, at least half back out there parking on my rear, because I have two lot, is now I'm going to make a parking lot that the city also help to, to build a parking lot. And so I want to have the answer today that, who know why the city want to buy the property, my next door? What the benefit? They can buy many, many property here, like Chevrolet, Mazda, or many big property, they can, you know, use for city purpose, but the little tiny 40 feet, why, why they try, you know, they fight with me to buy that, or to keep that property? Yes, so.
Sorry, I can't answer that question for you, but thank you for coming and sharing that information with us. Thank you for testifying.
Yeah, okay. Happy New Year.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak this morning at a public hearing? Anyone else who would like to speak this morning? Hearing, no one else who has either signed up in writing or has spoken this morning, or going to close the hearing for this, this morning, there will be a hearing again this evening at 6:00 PM, and thank you very much for your comments, thank you for your patience during construction, and we will take this into consideration as we review this material, so thank you very much.